Yes, that's what we... Okay, that's it. You just want to be patient like I'm at Fort Myers.
I knew about your situation before you did. I saw him at a family party. He told me that it was going down.
Oh, okay. I was like, my situation? I got a news story?
He's always getting married. I'm like, really?
Yeah, yeah, no. Well, first of all, nobody's supposed to know. And it was so funny. You have that now? I mean, like after. I knew some people that I know.
Two.
We're down there. And all of a sudden, my phone just starts blowing up. Congratulations. What is going on? I got, look at this. Pearson posted that.
Bridgette, it's 201. I guess I'll take this off. Do I have to keep this on or off during?
If I'm the president, rules are all out the window.
That's true.
Ask them around if you want to get started.
I think we're ready.
Is there a call in?
Yeah, we're on hold.
I thought we did. Cutts on the line.
Cutts on the line.
So.
We're ready, if you want to get started.
Elsa?
Yep.
Okay, the meeting will please come to an order. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Juliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of this board is final in respect that it does not go to the mayor or city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory board to the mayor and city council and make any recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, hold the board, please.
Ms. Safford?
President.
Mr. Alessio?
Here.
Mr. Noctree?
Here.
Ms. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Okay. First up on the meeting is approval of minutes. We have two separate minutes. We should approve each of those separately. The first is approval of the December 10th, 2020 special zoning board of appeals minutes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion is second to approve. Pull the board.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Okay, the next is approval of the December 17th, 2020 zoning board of appeals minutes.
I move to approve.
I second.
You have motion second to approve. Pull the board.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
I abstain. I wasn't present for the meeting.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's no form on that, we can't approve that. Is that correct? I know it's formality and technicality.
Believe you don't, you have four. You have four, so you have quorum.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, otherwise, no.
Okay.
The next item is citizens to be heard on agenda items. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding agenda items listed on the agenda that are not scheduled for a public hearing. We do not have anything on the agenda today that is not scheduled, already scheduled for a public hearing. So, under old business, next agenda item is old business public hearing. We have nothing under that. Item six, new business public hearing. During the public hearing, members of the public will be allowed to present evidence and ask questions subject to the rules of the meeting. The first petition on the agenda is petition 2021-01, which also corresponds with petition 2021-02. This is an amendment to a variation of use to expand the previously permitted use, which is an automobile service garage, to include light truck, tractor cab, tire repair, which is a B3 general business use in an R2 single-family residential zoning district located 1101 North Broadway Street. The companion special use permit petition is for a light truck, tractor cab, tire repair and maintenance shop located at 1101 North Broadway Street. I'll read that report. If I can grab it. Sorry, you have to bear with me. I'm new at running this meeting. Okay. So, the applicant owner in this case is Alejandra and Abraham Garcia. The location for this request is 1101 North Broadway Street. The purpose is the applicant is requesting an amendment to a variation of use, which was ordinance number 7912, to expand the previously permitted use, which was an automobile service garage, to include light truck, tractor cab, tire repair, which is a B3 general business use in an R2 single-family residential zoning district located at 1101 North Broadway Street. In addition, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow an auto repair shop, which a light truck, to allow a light truck, tractor cab, tire repair and maintenance at this location. The city council makes the final decisions for these requests based upon the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Under site-specific information, the property is located at the northwest corner of Hutchins Street and Broadway Street. It is approximately 8,500 square feet in size. The property currently has two buildings, a 24 by 12 office building and a 24 by 23 garage building. And the shed that sits at the corner of the Broadway and Hutchins Street will be removed prior to this petition going to city council. You can ask the applicant, it may have already been moved. The property functioned as an automobile filling station from the early 1900s up until the early 1980s. The 1930 street directory notes that the Northern Indiana Petroleum Company Service Station operated here. And then in 1950, the property was Quig Super Service Station. The office building likely dates to the property's earlier years as an automobile filling station. According to the 1939 zoning map and subsequent additions, the property and the surrounding properties has always been zoned for residential use. The property is currently zoned R2 single-family residential. Martinson Tire Service acquired the property in the early 1980s. In 1983, the city of Juliet granted the property a variation of use to allow Mr. Martinson to add a service garage, a variation to allow two main buildings on one lot, a variation to reduce the side yard setback, and a variation to reduce the rear yard setback. And a copy of that ordinance is attached to your staff report. Mr. Martinson operated tire repair business at this location until early 2020. So for surrounding zoning, land use and character, to the north on all sides is R2 single-family residential. And the site is surrounded by single-family homes with the exception to the east, which is the Broadway-Greenway. For applicable regulations, section 47-68 or 6.8 is prohibited uses, section 47-17.28, variation of use, subsection 47-19.8 is finding of fact supporting a variation, which is outlined below, section 47-13.2AG, special uses, and section 47-5.2C, which is the criteria for issuance of a special use permit, which is attached to your staff report. For discussion, the petitioners slash owners, Alejandra and Abraham Garcia, bought the property for a light truck, tractor cab, tire repair facility in the spring of 2020. It was believed that at the time, they understood that large truck tire repair was not a permitted use on the property. They decided to operate the business in keeping with the pre-existing approvals for this site, which was tire repair and tire sales. They made numerous improvements to the property since their purchase, including updates to both buildings, removing junk and debris, and new paving on parts of the property. In late 2020, the orders decided to seek approvals to include light truck, tractor cab, tire repair at this location. Since auto and truck repair work is a prohibited use in an R2 single-family residential zoning district, an amendment to the existing variation of use approval is required. Light truck, tractor cab, tire repair, which is a B3 general business use, is also a new use for this property, and therefore, a special use permit approval is also required. A proposed site plan for this business is included with the staff report packet. The 24 by 23 frame building will house the tires and install equipment, and the 24 by 12 frame building will function as the office. The petitioners plan to create two automobile parking spaces for employees and customers at the southeast corner of their property and one ADA compliance space in front of the office building. There will also be one 11 and 1/2 by 20 automobile parking space at the southwest corner of their property. The building will have two, or excuse me, the business will have two employees, not including the owners. The hours of operation that are being proposed for the new location would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The petitioners expect a service up to four trucks over the course of a business day and up to two trucks at one time. Outside storage of inoperable vehicles and spare parts on the parkway or in the street will be prohibited. Public works and planning staff have several concerns about servicing tractor cabs and light trucks at this location, given that the site was designed for a 1930s automobile service and gas station. The first concern is that if the property owners do not adhere to the proposed site plan and allow trucks and vehicles to park outside of these parameters, customers may utilize Hutchins Street for parking. This would impose safety concerns at the intersection of Broadway Street and Hutchins Street. The second concern is that onsite turning movements would also be restricted if the business owners do not adhere to the parking parameters, causing onsite safety issues and safety issues on Broadway Street and Hutchins Street if trucks decide to utilize the street for off-site turning movements. The third concern is that city ordinance prohibits trucks on Hutchins Street since it is a residential street. If the business is not properly monitored by the business owners, trucks may utilize Hutchins Street as their ingress egress, which would cause a nuisance to the neighborhood and pose safety concerns at the intersection of Broadway Street and Hutchins Street. If the zoning board decides to approve the variation of use and special use permit requests, staff would recommend several site improvements to facilitate safer vehicular and pedestrian movements through this property and intersection, which are outlined below under conditions. So, under conditions, the following conditions would be included if you desire to recommend approval. One is that a landscape plan that references the conceptual site plan shall be submitted to and approved by the planning division within 60 days of ordinance approval detailing conditions number two through seven. Number two, that the area of asphalt pavement located at the intersection of Broadway Street and Hutchins Street shall be removed and defined by barrier curbing per the city's landscape and screening regulations within 90 days of ordinance approval. Three, that an approximate four-foot-wide landscape buffer along the south property line shall be installed and defined by barrier curbing per the city's landscape and screening regulations within 90 days of ordinance approval. Four, that a four-foot-wide public sidewalk shall be installed within the city parkway along Hutchins Street within 90 days of ordinance approval. Five, that the remaining paved parkway along Hutchins Street and the southwest corner of the property along Broadway shall be removed and returned to sod within 90 days of ordinance approval if existing drainage allows. Six, that a six-foot-high solid privacy fence shall be installed to replace the existing four-foot-high chain link fence along the north property line within 90 days of ordinance approval. Seven, that the dumpster shall be screened by either a six-foot-high solid fence with a locking gate within 60 days of ordinance approval, or the dumpster shall be placed in the existing screened area behind the buildings and wheeled out only on collection days. Eight, that all existing light and sign poles shall be cleaned and repainted within 90 days of ordinance approval. Nine, that the paved parking lot shall be striped per the approved conceptual site plan. Ten, that no outside storage of customer vehicles shall be allowed on the city parkway or city streets. Eleven, temporary outdoor storage of trucks and trailers awaiting to be serviced or to be picked up shall be limited to 10 days. Twelve, no temporary or long-term outdoor storage of inoperable vehicles, boats, recreational vehicles or parts, which includes tires, shall be permitted. Thirteen, that off-street parking shall remain in the future. Fourteen, that a business license shall be secured prior to opening. Fifteen, that a special use granted shall herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than 180 days of the effective day of this ordinance, and the erection or alteration of a building is started or the use is commenced within such a period. And the rest is standard language that is within every ordinance. Sixteen, failure to comply with any of the above conditions could result in a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And seventeen, which is the last one, should the property be declared a public nuisance by the city council, the property could be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the variation of use. And that concludes staff's report. We do have one, you have one comment that was submitted to you, a written comment, and we have one caller who will be called as part of this process.
Petitioner present?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. E and I are in.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Do you have an address, please?
Joseph Mazzoni, M-A-Z-Z-O-N-E, 3033 West Jefferson Suite, 208 Joliet, 60435.
Any comments?
Sir, I would tell you that I have been involved with this petition with Mr. Garcia and his wife almost from the beginning. It was a pleasure working with Jane. He clearly understands, and I've made sure of this, all of the conditions. And he understands that those conditions are a prerequisite to obtaining licenses, they're a prerequisite to continuing operation of the business. Any of us who have lived in the area have, will remember this gas station, and I've been around for about 45 years, and it's always been there. There isn't going to be, and I just asked, there isn't going to be any repair work, mechanical repair work. This is a tire shop. And he plans on returning tires to vehicles, light trucks, et cetera.
So, no repairs at all?
No.
We're just installing new tires. What are you focusing on, please?
And those are, it's a quick turnaround, not only in disposing of the old tires, but of installing the new tires. I believe that Jane and staff have been out to the site. They've looked at the lines, the potential parking areas, the repair areas. So he has done, he has done everything, he has cooperated with everything the city has wanted to this point. And we would ask that you recommend this for approval.
End it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak over there?
You want to say anything? You can. If you like, is there anything else that you didn't differ, you would say? Nope, that'll be it, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have two concerns. One is the traffic flow, especially mostly or exclusively of the tractors on and off of Broadway Street, which is an extremely busy street. You're supposed to stay off of Hutchinson. I think that it's difficult and dangerous enough now for people and cars to come in and out. The tractors are a different matter. They're difficult, and they move slowly to begin with, and that's going to be a traffic impediment and a source of possible accidents. And the second thing is the noise that comes from those kinds of diesel vehicles. Not only the engine noise and the exhaust noise, but also the air brake and the impact wrench on the tire and the wheel nuts is a lot louder on big vehicles like that than it is on automobiles and small trucks. And this is a residential neighborhood. So it seems to me this is not appropriate. The tire repair that's been there for many decades is there, and that's fine, but it seems to me that the addition of the large trucks is going to be a nuisance in the neighborhood.
Sir, the only comment I would have to you is that there are a significant number of semi-industrial-type businesses within blocks of this. Blocks to the west, blocks to the south, to the north at Theodore, there's a big tow truck place and towing company just a few blocks away. They are all zoned R2, to the best of my ability to look at your zoning maps. Also, sir, my client went on the offensive, or at least he went on the courtesy of talking to his neighbors, all of the neighbors that surround and border his property. And they all have indicated that they have no problems with him operating this business. He's going to try and be a good neighbor, he's going to put up that fence, that should be a good sound barrier. He's only going to operate between eight and five business hours and the eight and 12, I think, on Saturdays. No night work, no holiday work, et cetera. So he's done what he could to be considerate of the neighborhood. I used to live a few blocks from there, and I know there's all kinds of businesses that are interspersed. And as far as the noise is concerned, sir, there's a significant amount of truck traffic coming up and down Broadway. You're correct. They're making their noise, too. So he will be conscious of that and minimize it as best he can.
Any other comments by the board?
Are we of freedom on the line?
Rita's the first caller for this.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Rita.
Am I on now?
I must swear you in.
My name is Rita. I agree with the gentleman before.
Ma'am, I must.
That's done talking.
Ma'am, this is the chairman. I must swear you in, please. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
You're cutting in and out.
Repeat, repeat.
I can't hear you.
Do you, I must swear you in. Do you swear that the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Okay.
Okay, now your name and address.
Rita Zorba, 1119 North Broadway.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I agree with the gentleman before me. There's enough noise on this street, there's enough traffic, there's enough accidents. Right now, I am dealing with the state constantly about a manhole that's in front of my house. The semis that come by, my house actually shakes. I don't even, right now at this point, I'm questioning the weightage of the semis that are coming in and how good are the state police tracking the weight of the semis? The traffic will be horrendous going in and out and make sure that there will be accidents, let alone the noise, et cetera, et cetera. I've been here 50 years, and it's gotten nothing but worse. I'm not going anywhere. I can't go anywhere. This is my home, unfortunately, even if it falls down around me. I don't know what else to say. It's, there's just no room. The corner is too small. And besides that, you've got all that parking up and down the side street from the old Croatian cultural club. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other ones?
Is there anyone else there?
No.
No one else?
More?
No one else.
Sir, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I would comment, first of all, that none of these tractors that are there to be serviced will have trailers. It will be tractor only. And my client would like to say a few words also, please.
Abraham Garcia. Thank you for your time.
I swear you in, sir. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Do you have any address?
Abraham Garcia, 545 South Canyon Drive, Romanville, Illinois. So, we all understand there's a lot of noise on 53. We're not adding to that noise. It's our truck room. We've even put stuff in place to help weather that noise also. We even bought certain machinery, so we're not making the noise that this gentleman said. So, yes, sir, you are correct. Maybe back some time, there was only air tools, but due to the development of technology, they made very strong lithium batteries. So I've purchased electric guns, and I've also purchased air guns. And then I also went, again, I took the extra step, and I've soundproofed our compressor room. You can't even hear the compressor on with the doors closed. I had the compressor running when Ms. Jane and, I believe, Jim came over. They couldn't even hear the compressor going. And then I'll also add to the comment, again, I do understand that trucks that were built in 1988 might have been extremely noisy. The tractors that we're servicing, I don't even think we're going to be servicing any tractor that's 2017, maybe even 26, maybe even 2015. Go 2014. We're currently involved with a lot of fleets in the area. So, again, we're more focused on delivering to the fleets. We're already, we're currently mounting in Joliet already, but we're doing it mobilely. We're just asking for a little bit of assistance so I can just give that extra service to our clients. And then I will also add, it is also Joliet's best interest for this business to come in. I will tell you, my wife and I, for the business that they allowed us to operate in four months, we brought in a million dollars on taxable income for Joliet. And that's just straight wholesale. And with this operation, it will allow me to expand, but not expand there. Continue to expand, maybe Joliet can help us and we can buy a bigger property. But, you know, we're, they've asked. I even went and visited every one of my neighbors. No one seems to have a problem. This lady seems to have a problem? I think she's two blocks away from me. I haven't seen an accident yet. We've been there since the beginning of March. I have not seen one accident yet. Ingles slows down the traffic as it is. And if you're that concerned about the semi-traffic, well, then we're going to have to get Dick's towing in here because they have a big problem. I have multiple videos, I have multiple photos, I'll get them over to Jane. They use that accessway not only to tow the semis through there, but they also drive their semis through Hutchins. So we have all this concern about the weight on Hutchins. There's not going to be no concern. You have waste management, garbage dump trucks that are going through, they're fully loaded. Those are extremely heavy vehicles. I'm not asking to use Hutchins for my operation. I'm not. I have my own driveway. I've shown it. Jane and Jim came out. There is more than enough room for two semis to do it, you turn in there at the same time. I've measured, I've done all my homework, I've done everything you guys asked of. I just please ask that you guys just give us a chance, give us an opportunity, and you'll see that we're good, we're good folks. That would be it, sir.
Well, my observation is you've been running a very successful business there under a variation. And one of the conditions required to grant a variation is to demonstrate either a practical difficulty or hardship. It seems to me that your request is only to enhance your business. I don't see where the hardship is. Could you comment on that?
Certainly. There has been a market for this type of repair, the repair of semi-tractor tires. That is going to enhance his business, allow him to service better instead of using the portable equipment. He can bring it right back onto his site to do it, and he can do it in such a manner. Some of these service calls he does are outside the city of Joliet, and the city doesn't enjoy funds earned from those outside. So, is there a significant hardship? Everybody wants to grow their business. This is a COVID time. People have suffered immensely. Jobs have been lost. He sees an opportunity as an industrious person to increase his business and to fill a void, and that's what we're asking for. People that don't come in, they go other places, and some of those places are not in the city of Joliet.
Okay, thank you. If there's no one else wishing to comment, the chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion. Motion would be in order.
I'll just jump in. I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to deny the petition. Hold the board, please.
Ms. Rohr?
I just, I always hate these situations because even pulling up the Google Maps, I see the amazing improvements that you guys have made, and as a Joliet resident, I greatly appreciate it, and nobody supports small businesses. appreciate it. And nobody supports small businesses more than I do. The problem that I have with this, even though I do believe that you guys are good people, um, unfortunately, that doesn't, that doesn't make a change for, for other people that are driving onto your property, or if anybody has heard about trucks going in the wrong direction more than me in this room, I, I mean, I, I can't hear another complaint about it. It's, it is insane, and most of the time, it's not the truck driver's fault. And, and I just, in good conscience, I cannot, um, put that type of weight on the subdivision, especially the street Hudson's, and, and be okay. So I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no, or vote aye for the decline of the petition.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dory.
Okay, this petition will move on to City Council with a, um, recommendation for denial.
When is the meeting of the City Council?
It will be the second meeting in February. I don't have the date off the top of my head.
All right, I'll call. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll be that support for small business, by the way.
All right, the next item on our agenda is petition number 2021-3, which is a variation of use to allow an Airbnb, which is a B2 central business district use and a B1 neighborhood business district located at 914 Plainfield Road. Um, I have a request to table this petition from a City Council member to give staff some time to consider, um, reviewing Airbnb and short-term rentals in the city of Joliet.
What, are they thinking of creating an ordinance, or what?
Yes.
I move we table.
I second.
We have a motion, a second, to table petition 202103. Pull the board.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
This, um, that petition will be tabled to the April zoning board of appeals meeting, by the way. I should have said that earlier. Apologize. Okay.
Jane, did you say April? I'm sorry.
April zoning board of appeals, yes. All right. Last on our agenda is petition 2021-4. The applicant owner, or excuse me, the applicant in this case is PSC, PSC Custom LLC. The location for this request is south of the intersection of Route 6 and Patricia Lane. The request is for a special use permit for a tank, truck, and tank trailer repair facility with ancillary tank trailer and equipment sales. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for a tank, truck, and tank trailer repair facility with ancillary tank, trailer, and equipment sales located the south intersection of Route 6 and Patricia Lane. The City Council makes the final decision for this request upon the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. For site-specific information, the subject property is located just south of the terminus of Patricia Lane at Route 6, US Route 6. The vacant land is approximately 10.25 acres in size, and the property is zoned I-1 light industrial. This case was filed on December 18th, 2021. For surrounding zoning land use and character to the north, um, I do want to say the staff report was incorrect. Um, it mentioned it was unincorporated Will County. The north, the subdivision to the north is, in fact, in the village of Shanahan, and it is, consists of a single-family home subdivision. To the south is unincorporated Will County, and that is zoned industrial there, and there is a tractor-trailer container yard. To the east, there is city of Joliet, I-1 light industrial zoning, and then there's a truck terminal, as well as there is village of Shanahan, um, zoning, and there is an industrial use at that location as well. And to the west is I-2 general industrial and, and from the city of Joliet, and it is operated by Crane Composites. For applicable regulations, I have Section 47-13 to AG for special uses for a B3 general business district, and Section 47-5.2C, which is criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and as attached. Under discussion, Polar Service Centers, also known as PSC, is the, is the contract purchaser of this vacant land. PSC provides parts and repair services to tank trucks and tank trailers that move food, fuel, and chemicals. PSC has 32 locations throughout the country. PSC currently has a facility at 132 South Harris Drive in Rockdale. PSC has outgrown this space and seeks a special use permit to build a larger facility at the subject property, which would employ approximately 40 people. The city of Joliet zoning ordinance requires a special use permit for tank, truck, and tank trailer repair facilities. The company also requests that the special use permit approval include permission to sell used tank trucks, tank trailers, and tank, and equipment as accessory to the principal use of a tank, truck, and tank trailer repair facility. A conceptual site plan and building elevations are included with the staff report packet. The proposed development will comply with the city's landscape and screening requirements and non-residential design standards. The 28,000 square hun- 28,600 square foot shop will be set back over 200 feet from Route 6. The company intends to create parking for 48 automobiles to north of the building and parking for 110 tank trucks and tank trailers east, west, and south of the building. All public improvements will be provided for as per the zoning ordinance subdivision regulations and the requirements of the public works and utilities departments. PSC has secured approval from the Illinois Department of Transportation for their front entrance onto Route 6. The property has an existing stormwater detention on its eastern edge. Sewer and water tap-on fees and development impact fees will be required. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of the special use permit request for a truck-tank-trailer repair facility with ancillary tank, trailer, and equipment sales, the following conditions would be included. One, that the sale of used tank, trailer, and equipment shall be accessory to the principal use of that subject property. Two, that a landscaping plan be submitted and approved by staff as part of the future building permit application process. Three, that architectural plans be submitted and approved by staff to ensure compliance with the city's non-residential design standards as part of the future building permit application process. Four, that a city business license be secured prior to opening. Five, that the special use granted shall herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained not later than 180 days of the effective day of this ordinance, and the erection or alteration of a building is started, or the use is commenced within such a period. And the rest is the standard language we always include. Six, failure to comply with any of the above conditions could result in a rehearing, impossible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes staff report. We do, we did provide the zoning board of appeals one written comment, um, and we do have two callers on the line, and I'm not, in addition to whoever may be here today. That's it for me.
Okay, petitioner present? I swear you in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present us the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you. Your name and address?
Uh, my name is Nate Washburn, 111 North Ottawa Street here in Joliet. Uh, I'm the attorney for the applicant, PSC Customs. Um, I would like to start off by thanking, uh, Mr. Chairman and board members for hearing us today. Uh, we're here on a request for a special use. Uh, we stand behind what staff has put in their proposal. Uh, I believe that's a pretty good summation of what we're proposing to do. We're relocating an existing facility, uh, from Rockdale and expanding it. Um, there's a need for additional space, and the site makes the most sense, uh, given our needs. Um, and I would like to turn it over to, uh, Brian Edmison, who is here, uh, also on behalf of the petitioner, uh, to give a little background about Polar, what they do, and, uh, what we can expect as far as use in and out truck traffic in a little, uh, on that.
Oh, you're all ready for me, okay. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present us the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
Brian Edmison, number 2 Henman Place, Mount Vernon, Illinois. I'm an architect. I work nationally for Polar to help them expand, repair, um, their facilities, build new facilities such as this case. Polar does operate a shop. They've been at 123 Harris Drive in Rockdale for, since 2014, under the current ownership. The, the site is a combination. The buildings build at different times. That does not present a good image for the company at that location. The parking lot is gravel. Everything we try to do, you know, their units are filthy. Even if they were clean when they got to the site, they're dirty from our own parking lot. The company wants to build a new facility. They want to be in Joliet. The location along Route 6 is actually closer to where our customers are located. Our customers, such as Hennif Transportation is a good example, has a facility on Route 6. They would use repair services at the Polar facility. Polar doesn't operate a fleet, and we don't work on trucks. All we can do is work on existing units that are already in the market that require recertification, service, safety, uh, inspections and concerns. Some of these units carry hazardous materials, refined fuels and chemicals and different things that support the area. Every trailer that comes to the site would be certified clean before it could enter onto the site or enter into the building. We don't deal with hazardous chemicals. We wouldn't use hazardous chemicals to service any of the units. There would not be truck parking at the site. The only items that we would park would be our customers' trailers. In regards to, um, being able to sell used or new equipment at the site, we wouldn't at any time keep an inventory of used equipment or new equipment. We have a sales force that's part of a different division of the same company that sells equipment that have, they have offices within the facility. And it may be that a unit could be delivered there for pickup by a customer, but at no time would we have long-term storage of trailers. What is planned, currently, we have 10 service bays in Rockdale. We have 16 service bays here. Presently, we have 28 employees. We hope to within one year, one year grow from 28 to 40. And that's the reason to move in addition to the improvement in the image in the market. Polar has a lot, has a good job. We, we pay well. Starting salary is $19, upper end, $47 an hour. For someone who's a technician that works on these units. So it's not just another warehouse job. It's a, it's a good-paying job with benefits, um, and everything that goes with it. The facility will be 200 feet to the front door from the highway, another 50 feet to the start of screening, you know, so the trailers would be screened. We operate from seven to five. There wouldn't be no nighttime activities. You know, one, one problem with a facility like this is light noise for, you know, light after hours. And the reason that we would have those lights is only if they're required by the zoning ordinance, which they are, to a fairly high light level. And we would make every effort to prevent that light from leaving the site, you know, as we would present that with our luminous, illumination, uh, plans to the city. Polar is a good company. We want to be a good neighbor. Everything we would do is inside the building. We plan to air-condition the shop for a couple of reasons. One, it's good for retention and for recruitment of new people. And also, we do some welding. We use some aluminum welding to repair trailers that have been damaged. It's advantageous to lower the humidity. This area has a typical high humidity area. So really, noise is limited to the cars, and when the people come to and from work, and when a customer would drop off a unit. The units do not move quickly through this site. On maximum, we may see 10 units move within that site a day. So no more than 10 out of 110 would come and go from that site. And we would definitely, I sat out there yesterday at 4 o'clock and watched the traffic. I wanted to see, you know, what, what we were gonna look at. We would encourage our customers to bring the units to and from off-peak. They don't, you don't want to pay a driver, you know, an extra half an hour to bring a trailer across town. We would make every effort to not impact negatively on the neighborhood. We have been through a preliminary design review with planning staff, have been through what the building will look like. It's gonna be precast concrete from Duquesne Precast to Naperville, fabricated at the Aurora plant. Our current lease expires November 30. I've been tasked with getting this building in place by November 30. I have a preliminary delivery day of May 1st for the wall panels. A lot of things have to happen between now and then, but I humbly request that you grant this special use for this project. Um, I don't think you could find a trucking-related business that would have a lower impact on the surroundings. You know, if, you know, any sort of warehouse or distribution or anything, even one of our other cus-, one of our customers who would rather fleet from there would have much more traffic than we would have.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Comments?
I have a quick question. Where's your current lease at?
123 Harris Drive in Rockdale.
Okay.
Right underneath the Rockdale Water Tower.
Yep.
And then you, you said the 110 parking spots are different trailers that you're gonna be working on and everything like that, or?
There are trailers that are coming to be parked to stage for service.
Okay.
You know, and they're gonna be there at least a week. And you may have a heavier repair. The trucks had an accident. We may have to replace frame parts, replace tank sides. They may be there, be in the building for 30 days. They're valuable, and so the insurance company generally wants it repaired. We have a, what's called an R-stamped shop, so we can recertify those for hazardous material particles.
Any other questions?
Yes, uh, just, I want to make sure I understood you correctly. You think about 10 trucks will come or go in, in the average day?
Maximum.
Maximum. Okay. So we have received some, um, misgivings from the neighbors from the subdivision across Route 6 who are afraid you're gonna, you know, be exacerbating the traffic on Route 6, but it would look that that's probably not really the case.
It will not be the case. When you look at this, it could be 110 truck fleet. That's just absolutely not what it's gonna be.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, could you, um, say again about the 110 trucks and how many you expect to actually have there and why they would be sitting?
Well, we have a 16-day shop, so we have de- backup depth of customers waiting for us to work on the units.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Just one other question. Um, the, uh, the staff report indicated that you had been working with the Illinois Department of Highways, or they approved your design for the ingress, ingress and outgress. Is that correct?
Um, I swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about to present us the truth under penalty of law?
Uh, yes.
Name and address.
Uh, Nate Washburn, 111 North Ottawa Street.
Oh, I saw you earlier before.
Not a problem, Chairman. Um, I actually.
Take off your mask.
I actually wanted to, uh, interject, to, uh, turn this over to, uh, Tom Carroll, uh, our engineer here, uh, as they were, uh, Geotech was more or less, uh, involved in the I-DOT permitting.
I haven't gotten you yet. Okay. I swear the evidence you're about to present us the truth under penalty of law.
I do.
Name and address.
Uh, Thomas Carroll with Geotech Incorporated, uh, 1207 Cedarwood Drive, Crest Hill. Uh, we're the engineer surveyors for the project. Uh, so we had worked with the current owner to obtain the I-DOT permit for the entrance. Um, and as part of that permitting process, the owner, uh, did perform a traffic study, uh, for the site and looked at the site for the owner did perform a traffic study, uh, for the site and looked at the site for a logistics use, warehouse use, uh, with a maintenance facility. Um, and so that, that report was reviewed by IDOT. The entrance was approved. Uh, they determined that no uh, significant impacts would be felt on Route Six. No improvements were required to Route Six in terms of turn lanes, those sort of things. Um, and like I said, the report was for a more intense use than what they're proposing. Uh, that report contemplated a, uh, distribution center, um, and that's not the case here. This is strictly a maintenance facility.
I was wondering if, um, um, so it wasn't you guys that talked to IDPH. It was the owner?
Well, we, yeah, we did the, the work for the owner. Uh, we prepared, yeah, we prepared a set of plans for IDOT for the entrance. Uh, we coordinated with the traffic consultants to prepare the traffic study, um, and then we kind of walked that through the permitting process with IDOT. Uh, so that permit was received from IDOT in February of last year, uh, and then the, the work was constructed, uh, soon thereafter in the spring of 2020.
Okay. I don't see any problem with, with your petition. I was just wondering if, if the highway department gave you any hint if they were going to be widening the, the route?
No, they, yeah, they, there was no discussion on that.
All right. Thank you.
Any others? Do we have any outside speakers?
We have, um, on the line to give their comment on the phone. And Derek, do we have anyone outside? No. So we just have two people ready to give comments. So, Chairman, are you ready for those?
Yeah, let's get the one outside here.
There's no outside.
There's no one outside.
Okay, over the phone then?
Yeah, Chris, we're ready.
Uh, we have Mayor Missy on the line.
So we have the mayor of Shanahan is on the line. Hi, Mayor, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Hello.
I must swear you in.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Yes, I must swear you in.
Of course.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do, sir. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Uh, my name is Missy Mormon Schumacher. I'm the mayor of the village of Shanahan, uh, 24555 South Navajo Drive. Of, um, coming up with a site plan. Uh, the building setback and the way that it is set on the property, that's a very appropriate use of this piece and overall it looks very good. Uh, my concern is with Route Six and, um, hearing some of the things I heard today here while I was listening to this meeting, um, a lot of the angst could probably have been avoided or alleviated with a simple, hey, neighbor courtesy call. Uh, so I apologize for the eleventh-hour comments, but I just learned of this, um, Tuesday afternoon from a resident who received a zoning letter. Um, Tom Carroll, question for you. You said that a traffic study was done and when we talked to Joliet staff yesterday, they were unaware of that. Um, can you tell me the date of the report? And, um, we would like a copy of that report if possible. Basically, my questions are, what is the traffic impact? Um, Will County Freight Mobility Plan, um, names this portion of Route Six. It is a single lane in either direction that in, way back in 2000, IDOT, um, agreed that it needed to be four lanes. And obviously, nothing's been done to it. And so this is a priority project. Joliet participated in that plan, as did we, and we all went on to agree to joint resolution between Shanahan, Joliet and Will County to support improvement of that between our newly constructed interchange at Six and I-55 and Joliet's proposed interchange at Route Six and Hobold Road. Um, this is a truck use and, um, ten trucks i- is not a lot, uh, but the, um, Mr. Edmondson, I believe, and I had trouble hearing him, so I apologize if, uh, um, I'm repeating some, but I understand that the company is looking to expand to potentially forty employees. That means, you know, twenty-eight to forty more cars at seven a.m. on that single lane of Route Six. And so my curiosity is, how do we ensure traffic flow through and even, um, condition number five on your special use permit, um, is one of the conditions is that adequate measures have been or will be taken. So, and maybe the traffic study can answer a lot of that, but like, and I said, I apologize for the eleventh-hour comments, but we didn't have, we were not privy to any of this. Um, and you know, we as municipalities talk about responsible development, so I need to at least ask the question. And I was told, um, that the previous owners were the ones who secured the entrance, so I'm wondering if that has been updated or if that was a, if that was misinformation? Um, and so I'd like to see what information was submitted to IDOT and what Joliet, um, does or, um, considers doing to increase the vehicular traffic, whether that be automobiles, you know, passenger automobiles or, or semi-trucks. So again, thank you for your time and I am in no way against this project as a whole. I am just concerned about that very narrow stretch of Route Six there that we've all agreed needs to be improved. And I asked, um, I asked that the board recommend that that traffic study be provided, um, or if, if one hasn't been done, if there is, or hasn't been, you know, done in some time, that that be updated. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Respond?
Sure. Uh, again, Tom Carroll with Geotech. Uh, yes, the, the traffic study was done, uh, you know, probably, um, early spring of last year, maybe, maybe late fall of 2019. Uh, I think the IDOT permit was granted in, uh, February of 2020. Uh, the study, uh, was done, uh, by a consultant, KLOA, um, out of Rosemont, who does, uh, a lot of work in the area and, and a lot of work for IDOT. Uh, they looked at the site for a, uh, logistics center. They looked at it for forty employees, uh, you know, a, warehouse of, of, uh, the same size as what's being proposed. Uh, the study didn't find any impacts to Route Six or to the intersection with Patricia. You know, it was reviewed by IDOT. IDOT approved the study, agreed that no improvements were required to Route Six, and they granted the permit for the entrance. Uh, so that entrance was constructed, uh, in, in the spring of 2020. Uh, and, and the owner, um, did that work, uh, upfront because he knew it was going to be, uh, potentially a trucking use. That's, you know, kind of the, uh, what's going in the area. Um, so in order to make that property, uh, more valuable, more marketable, uh, he went ahead and got the IDOT permit upfront, uh, before he started marketing the property. Um, so it, it was, uh, approved by IDOT for consideration as a trucking use.
Was that study submitted to the city?
I'd have to look. I know we submitted, uh, the plan. We had a concept plan at the time for the city. Uh, the city, uh, did sign, uh, IDOT requires a municipality review form.
Staff, no, that was?
I mean, uh, I, I did talk to two of our city engineers yesterday, Russ Lubash, our traffic engineer, and Scott Gapsovich, one of our, um, engineers at the Public Works Department. They did confirm that in these, IDOT has control and jurisdiction as, as, um, Mr. Carroll's noting. So what we do is, he said, we did sign off acknowledgement that it did go downstate. Um, Russ and Gra, uh, excuse me, Russ and Scott do not recall getting a copy of the report, but they at that time didn't question it either because, um, it's, it was IDOT's jurisdiction to make that determination for the ingress egress. But we, we were aware that this was going downstate.
Okay. Does the, uh, mayor of Rockdale, uh, have access to obtain a copy of that or should we provide them one?
We will, we will provide the, well, we'll work with Geotech to make sure she gets a copy. Right?
Yeah, I have a more believable question with the previous owner.
Okay.
Nate Washburn again. Um, PSC, the applicant, uh, did not commission that study. The improvements for the entrance were installed by the existing property owner and we have no right, we don't have a copy and we have no right to give that out. It's the purview of the existing property owner.
Okay.
Um, I, we can make that request, I suppose, but I can't guarantee any answer as to whether or not we would be able to obtain a copy or that the current property owner would be willing to provide it.
As a gesture of goodwill and, uh, as a neighboring community, I think we owe it to them.
I mean, I'm happy to, uh, make that request and if, if and when we receive it, I, I don't think there's going to be any problem sharing that information.
I think we should have a copy for the city also and that should be a requirement.
Okay.
Mr. Edmondson is indicating that my client will obtain a copy and we will supply it to the city and to the village of Shanahan.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
We do. We have one more, the village administrator of Shanahan.
Uh, yes, we have Thomas on the line.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas Durkin.
Yes.
Thomas, our, our chair is going to, he's going to swear you in.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Tom Durkin. I'm the village administrator for the village of Shanahan, 24555 North Ottawa Drive. Um, thank you very much for allowing me, uh, to participate in this meeting. I do have a few questions. Um, uh, and it, it is related to the topic of, um, the traffic, uh, impact, uh, and any, uh, necessary improvements to Route Six. Uh, Tom, you had mentioned that the previous owner, uh, commissioned a traffic study, uh, of genetic nature, uh, made the improvements as a result of that study, uh, and then marketed the property. Was IDOT made aware of any, uh, change in what was being proposed, uh, at this particular site since it was not considered as part of the original, um, permit requested application?
Um, as part of the permit application, we did, uh, prepare a concept plan for the site, showing it as a truck use. The traffic study, uh, uh, did their calculations and the report based on a truck use. They actually looked at it as a logistics center, more of a warehouse-type site. Um, so that was always the anticipated use for the study. Uh, we did have a, a, a concept plan as part of that and we, uh, had a note, we made IDOT aware that, you know, the concept plan was, was, uh, you know, preliminary nature, conceptual in nature, um, but that was the intended use was always for trucking. Um, so they, they were aware of that.
So IDOT was not informed, I, I, IDOT was not informed of any additional, um, interest by PSC on the property or what they would bring to the table and how that might or might not affect the traffic study, uh, or the improvements that may be necessary to Route Six?
Yeah, but, well, not as terms of this development. You know, the entrance was permitted. As part of this development, we will have to go back to IDOT because we're going to require, uh, the utilities to be extended across the Route Six right away. So water main and sanitary sewer are going to be extended across for the improvements. We'll go back to IDOT for a utility permit, uh, for that work. So.
So you were the one that was commissioned by the previous owner to do all this work, to get this traffic study, to present these plans to IDOT and that sort of thing. So you, in effect, you have a full report of what the permitting, uh, what was included in the permitting to IDOT and the correspondence back and forth from IDOT as a result of that, correct?
Yes.
So we would be able to get a copy through you?
Yeah, as, as we've indicated, the, the PSC is going to work with the existing owner to, you know, try to authorize the release of that material.
Okay. Well, I'm sure it's public record also and we could probably get a, a copy from IDOT directly if that becomes a problem, so.
Yeah, I don't see it, I don't see it being a problem.
Information on that. Um, the, uh, so when you say you're going back to IDOT with, for utilities and that sort of thing, will, uh, any of this traffic information be updated as to what's being proposed there? Or is that topic completely done now that the work was put in prior to PSC being involved in the project?
Um, it's not something we've discussed. I mean, I think, you know. I mean, we can have, we can, we can have KLOA who prepared the original study, uh, you know, look at the report and see if any updates are needed. I, I think as I've, I've mentioned, it was originally done for, you know, uh, uh, for a truck use and warehouse space. So I, I don't think it's really going to be, uh, too significant of a change from what they, what the original for, report contemplated. It's not like we-
Yeah, it's made very well known. It's kind of an unusual circumstance when you have a, a permit application made without a particular end user on there. So the information that you're, and it says, providing to IDOT is really kind of unknown at that point. Um, you can aim high for something. I mean, you can, you can add in, you know, a D cell lane and a, and a left turn lane into the property. Um, it could have just as easily been done without doing a driveway, uh, or only just a driveway access on there too. So, you know, in, in that line of thinking, uh, some additional improvements could have been done ahead of time without knowing what was going to be there at the end of the day. Um, and it still would have been affected the same way. Um, I find it a little bit kind of strange too. Mr. Edmondson indicated he's got a delivery date in May for this project, yet application was made for IDOT for a permit access in late 2019 with a permit issued nearly a year ago. And now we're just, I'm not curious as to, as to how that happened and then, you know, we are now making application to get a project approved, uh, in, in January of 2021 with a delivery date in May of 2021. Why was that not submitted, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, knowing typically how long IDOT takes in conjunction with the application that is made to IDOT? I find that kind of unusual.
I think it's two separate, two separate things. The, the IDOT permit was done by the original owner for a trucking use. Uh, the original owner, uh, or the current owner right now, uh, PSC is just a contract purchaser. The, the current owner, um, also has a, a trucking business in Joliet. And, and, and as I recall, as part of his discussions, if he wasn't able to find buyers for the property, he was contemplating moving, you know, possibly his operation there. So that's why he went forward with the IDOT permit to get that entrance. Because as you mentioned, the IDOT permitting process is a long lead time. So he took the initiative to get the IDOT permit at the front end. Drew up the plans, did the traffic study for a trucking use, got the permit on the front end. That way, when a prospective buyer came in, as PSC did at the, uh, late last year, the, they came in in November to purchase the property. That way, the permit's already in place. It's ready to go for a trucking use. They can get up and running quicker that way. So it's, it, I'm not sure it's all that uncommon. Um, you know, I think with the long lead times that IDOT has right now, the owner took the initiative to get the permit on the front end to speed things up for prospective buyers. Um, it made the property more marketable.
Right. And, and, and I want everybody to understand also that, that I too don't, don't object to this particular use at this property. I think given what's around it to the, uh, uh, west, east and south, um, that the use is pretty consistent with that in the area. My, I share the same concerns of the mayor that we have a already overly burdened, uh, US Route Six between Hobold and I-55 as, as indicated by IDOT many years ago and has been concurred with by the leadership in the city of Joliet, the county of Will and the village of Shanahan, that there are some, uh, drastic measures that need to be taken with regard to, uh, further improvements, uh, as our area continues to grow and develop. Um, I, I, you know, I find it a little disconcerting that the city of Joliet did not request all of this information and updated information regarding this impact or potential impact on US Route Six with the position that they had taken publicly, uh, through the passage of resolution and supportive funding and supportive improvements to US Route Six, that, you know, the staff is not aware, uh, of any of this work that was done with IDOT, uh, nor has expressed the concerns about getting any of that information to make sure that if there are any improvements from a potential development, that those are put in place to, to not exacerbate a situation that's already pretty challenging to begin with. Um, I know it's something that here in the village of Shanahan, we continually monitor and make sure that, um, that, that those things are looked at, uh, in the event that, that any additional improvements need to be made. Um, so I, again, uh, I want to make sure I state that for the minutes and hopefully my concerns get expressed to the, uh, city council. Um, um, I will also await to see, um, for permit application is what I'd like to request to IDOT redining the improvements with some updated information, uh, about this project to ensure that, that this project will not, uh, trigger any additional improvements on US Route Six going forward. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's it?
That's it.
Can I just make a closing statement, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So you've heard testimony from both Mr. Edmondson and Tom Carroll. And I thank both the village president of Shanahan and Mr. Durkin, their administrator, for their comments. I think we've been fairly clear with our testimony that the road issue is under IDOT jurisdiction. We will do our best to provide to both Shanahan and the city any information within our purview, ours or the current property owners to provide. However, as Mr. Carroll has explained, the intended use that IDOT was presented with was a more intensive distribution warehousing facility, which we in Joliet know full well what that means as far as truck traffic and ins and outs. The facility that Poler is proposing here really shouldn't add much in the way of truck traffic. What we're doing is taking broken trucks off the road, bring them into our facility for anywhere from a week to a month to repair them, and then sending them back to whoever their owner is to put them back into service. So we're not running a fleet. We're not operating a facility that is intended to generate additional truck traffic. There will be, hopefully, both for the community and for, you know, the betterment of Poler, a need for additional employees, which may result in a few extra, you know, automobiles. But, you know, the main concern seems to be IDOT concerns. But again, we will do our best. I think we, again, stand behind staff's proposal and their recommendation of approval. And we would respectfully request a vote of approval on our special use permit. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. We look forward to your vote.
Thank you. Yeah, I concur. I think most of the criticism I've heard today is mostly about procedure rather than the substance of the special use permit. So I'm closing petition to the floor, asking the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve ZVA 2021-04. To approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the board, please.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. Your turn.
Paper everywhere. Does anyone have an agenda? I guess it's lost somewhere.
Citizens to be heard.
Public comment is next, Jane.
What?
Old new business, not for final action is next.
I don't know. All right. Next item on the agenda is old new business, not for final action. Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Bridget. We do not have anything on that part of the agenda.
No.
The next item on our agenda after that is public comment. Do we have anyone here? Derek for public comment.
Did you have one heard?
Okay.
Mr. Edmondson, do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
My name's John O'Leary. I live at 128 East 7th Street in Lockport. And I was the petitioner for the 914 Plainfield Road Airbnb house, which that issue got tabled. And not really understanding the process here or what's going on, staff told me yesterday to be here today for this meeting, not knowing what's the next step.
So the tabling request came in last minute. I mean, I'm representing and taking Jim Torrey's place today. I know he was the staff member who was working with you directly on this. So I got the request to table 10 minutes before the meeting. We had several letters of concern from residents. I think that that was expressed to the council member who requested the tabling action. And then this board did vote to table it to the April zoning board of appeals meeting. I don't know if I had the date written down. So, so what's going to happen at this point is, so your request is tabled. It'll go on that agenda for the April zoning board of appeals meeting. In the meantime, staff has been directed, my understanding, to look into ordinance changes for short-term rentals in the city of Joliet.
So I am then to just, I wait then until April, and then if this body approved the petition, then it would go to the city council in May?
May, yes.
And each of these months costs me money, and this is getting very expensive. I did not anticipate this at all. Is there anything I can do to expedite this in terms of staff or representatives?
I don't believe so, but I can check with our, our legal counsel about that.
Jane, is there, one other thing was postponed until, I think, February. Why does this one have to wait all the way to April? And is there something, nothing going on in March or it couldn't be handled?
Given the staffing constraints in our division right now, I don't see us being able to, well, one thing is the agenda's already been posted for, well, it's already been finalized for next month's meeting, with the exception if something had gotten, if this petition had been tabled, that's one thing. But the request, the companion request is prepared ordinance. So if this was in fact tabled to next, this petition tabled to next month's meeting, my guess it would be tabled again because that ordinance wouldn't be ready in time. You see what I'm saying with that? So I guess, again, prior to this meeting, it was decided that April zoning board would give us enough time to prepare an ordinance, getting it to the zoning board and doing appropriate discussion on that topic prior to, so having that with public notice and stuff and the timing of all that. So that's why we landed on April.
Okay. So let me just reiterate, because I think I'm even getting confused now. So we would, the, the whole purpose and the reason for us to table it was so that we were able to look at a policy or an ordinance in general to cover Airbnb. And we would then have to vote on that, not specifically his request. Is that correct?
No, we'd be voting on his request.
Because would we be?
That's a very good, very good question. The policy request, the policy of Airbnb or short-term rentals would not go to the zoning board of appeals.
Exactly. Yeah. So my thing is, is if for some reason something did expedite and something happened there, and he was covered under it, he would not need to come to this board, correct? Because there would be no need for a variance?
I guess, I guess we could get that when it came.
What was that?
It would depend on how they wrote the ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, though. He's talking about if there's any way that there's be an expedite resolution before April.
Withdraw the tabling motion, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
That's, that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
So that's not going to happen. So it's going to proceed.
And then the April.
We have to wait for the ordinance to be created. If they're going to create one, we don't have one now. That's up to the city council. It has nothing that this board can do.
Is that up to the city council? Is that up to the city staff?
So if you have a problem, I'd address it to the city council, not to this board.
Is it, is it a zoning ordinance amendment, Jane?
Since the zoning, it would be, well, it depends on how the city would go about it. It could be a, an ordinance in our municipal code, or it could be a zoning ordinance. I'm not sure.
So if it's a zoning ordinance amendment, that goes to plan commission and then city council. If it's a code of ordinances, I think that goes right to council.
It'll go probably to land use committee meeting first, and then.
And then council.
Yes.
We have a whole government chart explaining everything.
Derek, we, we have our economic development director in here. Do you have any other, anything to add? Sorry to put you on the spot about a process with this, but if that would vary from what I just mentioned?
I would agree with the chairman that the applicant should address the city council and their concerns and see if there's something that can be done.
Okay.
I also think, Jane, me and you can talk to legal and maybe get some clarification on this.
Sure.
Let's proceed.
So I'm, so I'm, I'm still a little fuzzy on what's going on, as you can maybe understand. Just where I'm coming from, I purchased this building back in October, intending to run it as an Airbnb, talked to neighborhood services, specifically asked them, was it allowed? And was told, well, yes. And what kind of permits do I need? And well, unless, after you purchase it, we'll come in and inspect it, which they did. And then I find out that zoning wording isn't appropriate, and I need to go through this process. I'm kind of stuck in a lurch here because I, this is, the, the property costs me carrying costs, you know, a thousand plus a month, every month. And now I've gone carrying, I was hoping to have it up and running January 1st, and now I'm looking at, ooh, May, June, if at all? This is turning quite the quagmire. How can I expedite this? Or maybe get some sort of clarification and get out of it?
Yeah. And something else that I was actually, because I had emailed Jim before the meeting today to ask him about, because I, I know of other Airbnb ordinances like in, in like the city. So I know how that works there. So I was just curious as to like, the situation and why, why it was really coming to us. And that's when he had said that there was no policy on the books. So when we voted to table it, because a council member had suggested that, I was more or less, I guess, under the impression that we were going to be, well, not we, but there was going to be an addressing of future policies. Because my big concern was, well, if you come in and we have given you a variance to do Airbnb, and then all of a sudden we start doing, you know, fees and ordinance restrictions for somebody else, does that mean you're grandfathered in? Does that mean that you then have to come back and get a whole, go through the process all over again? So I was very confused on that. So that's why I was very much for tabling and waiting for a full ordinance to happen. And I think that that's, as unfortunate as for you, I think that that's kind of, you know, fair for us to have a policy for it. I feel horrible that you were given wrong information. And, you know, and it, but I, we, I mean, there's no policy for it. You're the first.
Do you have a point to make here? I mean, it's been tabled. That's it.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can do about it.
Well, I'm also just trying to give him some solace, knowing that, that like, that we should have an ordinance coming that should be able to encompass everything it is.
We don't have an ordinance. That's why it was tabled.
Not at this moment. Yeah.
So let's, let's just move on. The gentleman is going to have to wait for the legal proceedings. That's it.
We, we will, staff will be in touch.
Okay.
Let's go.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Motion to table?
Er, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No more tabling.
Next order of business is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Want to pull the board?
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Okay. Here we go.
Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.